And she is gonna be happy to come and discuss with the council the benefits and some of the areas where we are not exercising the chamber appropriately to the benefit of the town. So I can keep you posted on a date when she is available and our budget docket is, or our council docket is not so loaded.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number five, code enforcement completed. Number six, code enforcement postage, that's complete. Number seven, also code enforcement on the engineering fees inspections is complete. Planning board, we're gonna be scheduling a meeting, joint meeting with the planning Insurance, I had item number nine, insurance, plan to go out for bid for more options, adding individual plus spouse or individual plus one option. Anytime you change health insurance, it's like a year, you need at least a year time, a year of lead time in order to accomplish that. So I think we leave this on the list for the next fiscal year, but activity would need to start this fiscal year in order to accomplish that.
So I, so I can fill in a couple of details for you. Because there's two distinct things the town could do. One would be to go out to bid, buy a new product. The other thing we're allowed to do without the bidding process is explore our options with the other collective buying groups. So one is the WB and the other is RIMIC. I would like to at least explore those things with at least one member of the council to join me in the effort and our healthcare guy who's been helping us out with the OPEB because our initial discussions with the RIMIC, we believe there's so much loading in the trusts' fees to us that we may be paying as much as 16% more for the exact same Blue Cross/Blue Shield product. And we can skin the cat of employee and spouse and other things, perhaps as the council president suggests in a year, but a move to the RIMIC is a thousand dollars and, you know, any equity we had left in the trust, we may or may not still be there in terms of whether they'd cash us out or whether we'd owe them anything. We certainly have been with them long enough, but if we don't have the conversation, we don't know the answer to the question, could we save by doing it differently? So, I mean, April 1st is the notice date for the trust.
Madam President?
Yes, John?
I'd like to assist the administrator with that.
Is that okay with the council? Proceed and explore options with, without going to bid.
Right.
When should we receive an update? We need at least, what, a couple of weeks?
Two weeks.
Item number 10, the fire, this was review feedback on the overtime cap and adding a part-time clerical position. I think John did some analysis on the clerical position.
I did, thank you, Madam President. I met with Chief Lloyd this afternoon. We went over some numbers, assumptions, basically detailing calls. It's right here. And so I was able to compile some data with the assistance of the chief based on calls and revenue that's recaptured based off of those calls, and that's the report you have in front of you. If you flip open to the first page, you will see the assumptions that I used. Second page under the data tables, this is our historical data. I will add that in working with the fire department, it is incredibly different, difficult to get exact detailed numbers. They use multiple systems to log a call and then, you know, to go out and bill, it's a separate system. What they report to us, what they report to the state are all different systems. The data is there, unfortunately you can't get it out. So we had to make a few assumptions, rough assumptions. As it turns out, our numbers are very close to what they, what are, what these numbers are, very close to what the town's experience should be. So when you see, for instance, in the column, 2016, down at the bottom recovering dollars, we should be able to recover, assuming these numbers are correct, close to 770,000. Now, where that lies today is dependent upon the amount of time that the full-time administrative assistant has to dedicate to actually filling out those billing reports. For some companies, it's a year, for some companies it's 60 days, for some companies it's 90 days, and the actual reimbursement rates depending on each insurance company. So Medicare will pay 40%, Blue Cross may pay 30%, Tufts may pay 100%. It varies, but these numbers should be approximately close to what we should expect to receive based on the volume of calls that we've experienced. These are calendar numbers, by the, by the way, so it's not fiscal year.
Yep.
So, so on the next page, you'll see again historical numbers, you know, call number, associated EMS call numbers. Again, we use 65% of the calls that go out are EMS, therefore 65% of the calls that go out, we can recover some sort of a dollar from that call. And it averages out to be an increase of 117 calls a year or 5% year-over-year. Get some charts in case you want to visualize it. And then over to the forecast section. So what I did is I looked at 2016 through 2030. What's, what's important here is that if you use a five, the first column, total calls percentage, if you use a 5% year-over-year increase, assuming that holds true, it has us in 2030 at 6,400 calls out of the fire department, which again is about a 100% increase over where we are now versus where we were 14 years ago. And then I took total calls number, that's the every year adding 117 new calls, took the average of each, and that's your total calls average, assuming 65% of that. So as we look out, you know, there is, by the way, one other item I would mention is there is a definitive amount of time that one person can dedicate to each EMS call and coding that. By using the, the chief's experience in his department, best-case scenario of 10 minutes per call, worst-case scenario of 30 minutes, two-thirds of which being on the latter end of that timeframe, is how we re-determine the amount of time required in a given year in hours to complete this work. And because of her additional duties, we assume an average of 15 hours per week, 50 weeks per year work, that's where you get the 750 number from. So you can see there's a definitive crossover point, which at, even in 2016, we needed 810 hours to do the work, and she's got 750 available. So we're leaving money on the table. And one of two things is gonna happen, either we're gonna code faster and be less accurate, which results in less receivables, or we're just gonna miss out on that revenue altogether. So I believe the numbers speak for themselves to justify a full-time employee and that there's definitive amount of money that we can recover. That would, again, that goes back to the general fund, so that can be used for other things such as trash and...
You're suggesting a full-time, not a part-time?
I'm suggesting we already have a full-time. I'm suggesting, I'm suggesting adding a part-time employee and that part-time employee's numbers are gonna provide dedicated time for our current full-time employee to spend on billing.
And that part-time employee would just do billing?
No, the part-time employee would do things administratively that, that...
The full-time?
Correct, yeah. You have to be licensed through the state in order to do it, yeah. But that does, that does bring up another interesting point is, you know, we have a very critical employee at the fire department and we need to have some sort of a contingency plan developed because unfortunately for the town, we have become accustomed to this revenue. On a fiscal year basis, it's, it yo-yo's around a half a million dollars a year, and that's even with years where she is spent, spending a considerable amount of time on contract negotiations or FSLA issues. She's also the one who reconciles when we talk about that, the work week or the 28-day reconciling, the overtime, she's the one who does that. So there's a lot of stuff on her plate, but most importantly is the billing, which the town desperately relies on. And that's, again, right now it's a half a million dollars, but based on the numbers, it could be significantly higher.
John, I spoke with Jody on the part-time, we can get 19 hours with no benefits.
Correct.
I have the totals here that I spoke to her about, but I got a mountain of papers and I'll never find it, but 19 hours a week will cover with no benefits, just straight pay.
Yeah, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Administrator, but we're talking about collectively 14, $15,000, $15,000 a year.
Roughly.
So, you know, 14, $15,000, $15,000 a year to net, you know, $150,000 in revenue, I think is well worth the investment.
Okay, so I think we're all in agreement, we should add a part-time clerical to the fire department so that we can make use of a full-time person on, on medical coding?
I would agree on this, but what I think, there should be some accountability. So I think once we add her on, then we should see numbers every month to see if our revenue is increasing. I think that's fair, but I think we should watch this very carefully to make sure that it has worked. And I, like, when, when the chief does the overtime reporting and all of that, he can just put that as another column, what our revenue is, and we can keep control on whether or not that's going on and whether or not this position has turned productive.
And as a, as a part-time employee, you can cut it if you, we only need her five hours, then she works five hours.
And that's why I'm saying we just should keep some kind of track of this to make sure that it has worked. Does that sound fair, John?
No, that, I mean, I would completely agree. You know, again, my expectation is that adding, adding an additional, even just an additional 10 hours a week spent towards billing is number one, gonna get us caught up. The chief can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that we've got 60 or 70,000 in revenue that's outstanding, that there just, that just, that just hasn't been enough time to get to yet. We're still within our ability to go and recover that revenue, but as you can see based on the calls, just looking historically, we were at 1,800 in 2004, we're at 32, almost 3,300 this year. The numbers are just gonna keep going up and that's part and parcel due to the fact that we have a, an overall aging population, but the town's also growing, so the more people come into town or businesses come to town, we're gonna have more action out of the fire department. And out of that, 65% of the time, there are gonna be dollars we can recover to offset the, the value that they provide. And by the way, when we look at that, I will note that the total EMS bill number, the page that Denise is on, that $4 million number, that's, that's one way to quantify the actual value that the fire department brings to the town. And again, that's 65% of the work that they're doing, that's not the entire amount.
I just wanna make sure this, this position is accountable because we are adding a new position in a fiscally bad year. I just wanna just make sure every month we can see that this, this is working.
And if it's not, we can cut it.
If it's not, we can cut it.
Yeah, and, and one other item I'd like to add, you know, I think that looking at the budget, where we've been, what we've looking, what we're looking to cut, there really is not a whole heck, a whole heck of a lot to cut. There's not much left, so our only option is to find additional ways to increase revenue. And, you know, they say in business you gotta spend some money to make some money, so if it's 15 grand to make 150, I mean, that's something we strongly, we need to strongly consider. And we need to look at other departments and find ways that we can do that as well. You know, I think really increased revenue is the only option we have.
All right, so if we increase, if we add a clerical part-time position of 15, say 15K, we can take 15K from the overtime?
At least. I think we can take 25 from the overtime because we're gonna make more money here, guys, so I think it works. I really wish you'd try that 25 because, I mean, take 50,000 from that overtime because I can't see, I really can't see that being spent. And if it is, then we have a problem. Then we have a problem we need to work on. Because that's what this contract was designed for, and it's working, so why should we take advantage of it?
Madam President, I also, I get the sense, given Mr. Karen's presence at the podium, that regardless of whether or not we choose to make it 25 or 50, the budget committee will have their way with the overtime account.
Could we ask him? You know, this is a discussion with the town council regarding our budget. I appreciate Jeff being there, but he's on the budget committee and they're gonna have their shot at it and their input and feedback on it. This is our discussion and I'd like to keep it that way. Sorry, Jeff, but...
That's fine, I was just gonna speak as a member of the public, but that's fine. Thank you.
So for the overtime cap, Mr. Administrator?
Does 125 sound good or 150? I wanna take the position from the overtime, I think it's all fair.
Yeah, I was, my last comment was grab the bull by the horns and require accountability and keep the place staffed. And, you know, if we're unsuccessful, we'll have to cross that bridge when we reach it. But if you don't, I used to know a guy who had this license plate, "Aim high." If you don't aim high, you ain't going anywhere, so get it done.
So does 125 sound correct to you? Well, could we do it? Or do you see what I'm saying, why we should be able to do it?
Right, and I guess all I'm responding is, I think that's a challenge that I think the administration should accept and try to make it work.
So I'd like to make a motion to decrease the overtime to 125.
Do we have to vote on line-by-line items?
I'm, I'm recording your ideas as you come up with them, I'm keeping a running total, but for your edification, I would budget a part-time clerk at about $17,300 for the salary and FICA of about 1319. So for plug-and-play here, I would have $18,620 budget impact of a part-time clerk.
Okay.
Are you recording the 125?
Yes.
We could always go back to that, too.
Well, that's a cut of 50, so I've got that in the column over here. You're right about, you were at 145,996 in cuts, you just added back 18,620. So, that's about 127,000.
Oh, that's...
I'm doing the best I can to keep up with that.
And that's also counting the overtime cut?
That's correct, 50 from there.
Okay, number 11, fire, we were going to, the town administrator was gonna quantify the cost of losing three people. We had an estimate of 115K from the chief.
That sounds a little high, Matt.
It was 67,000.
67. Okay, number 12, police and fire, provide documentation on the cost per trainee for the training academies, town administrator.
I'm enjoying the fact I've been on a roll to this point, but this is the one I didn't get to. Where, so on the fire department, we don't know yet. The cost hasn't been established for the course, and I know Chief Blakey threw out a number, it was around $4,000. Chief, what's the tuition for the municipal police academy?
Tuition?
Yeah.
There is no tuition.
What's the cost of putting somebody through training?
Twenty-two thousand, 600, twenty-two thousand, sixty dollars for six months.
Per person? Per person?
What is that? Is that, that's probationary pay to, pay all-in? I'm, I don't know if that was the question the town council asked, I didn't think it was.
But I like that question.
Yeah.
No, that was the question, you wanted to know the exact, the exact cost of us to...
There were rounds of ammunition.
That's a six-month, like that.
Uniform.
You wanna know the price of bullets as well?
Well, yes.
What is it, Clark?
And the price that's in China.
Because you were complaining to me about how many rounds of ammunition.
Well, I'm just saying, it's 30,000 rounds of ammunition.
Mm-hmm. 5,000 per.
What's that?
How many per?
Say around 5,000 per.
So we're putting six men in the academy right now, we don't need six men. It's costing us $22,000 for a man.
Twenty-two thousand, sixty dollars for six months.
Wow.
Their salary for six months.
That's a lot.
Their salary.
Because we don't need six men.
But, but there is always the chance that not all six make it through the academy, correct?
But it's still gonna cost us that amount of money.
Well, if they fail, if they, if they don't complete it, they're done.
Do they pay us back?
They don't pay a salary back, no.
Not the salary, but we just had somebody leave who failed.
Correct.
What did we get back? We got back the cost of the uniform.
Cost of the uniform and the health insurance, don't you?
The health insurance has dropped, obviously.
No, the health savings account.
Pardon?
Well, how much, what's the cost of a uniform?
Uniforms are $2,500.
Okay.
And that doesn't come out, I'm sorry.
When they're terminated like that, do we have to pay unemployment for, for a couple of, six weeks or whatever until...
That's a good question.
Mm-hmm, it's a fair question. I would say if you, if you're saying, put them through, if they're going through the academy and you decide not to hire them, obviously you're gonna have to pay unemployment. That wasn't the question.
No, no.
What happens when they fail?
If they fail.
If they fail.
Do you have to pay them unemployment for a certain amount of time?
I can tell you from the experience I've had that one recruit that I know of failed, applied for unemployment and that was denied.
Okay.
But that's, I can only tell you about that particular case.
So we've got three, three openings right now?
You have...
Three vacant positions.
You have no openings right now.
We have no openings. Vacant positions in the police department, how many do we have?
Right now, none.
And so, but we have six men in the academy?
We have seven people who can retire today.
That doesn't matter.
Okay, well, then, it doesn't matter.
Because every year we hear that and we don't get seven people retired. So we have no open positions. We put six men in the academy, which costs us over 125,000.
132,000.
That is ridiculous.
Is it?
Yes, unacceptable.
Okay, so if I did, if we do the math and we pay overtime for four people for six months, it's just, I could give you the figures, how much would it cost?
Yeah, but we don't have any openings right now.
We have people who are looking for jobs, we have people who are...
Looking to leave.
Well, wait a minute, they're out, they've come to me and they, listen, they, if you pay me to tell you what I, what I, I have a, no crystal ball, but if I tell you that I have seven people that have expressed an interest in leaving, some of them are looking for jobs, do we wait? That means we're gonna, we will not be able to get anybody in the academy, we will not get a police officer in this town till March of 2018.
Last year, how many were eligible for retirement at this time?
How many last year?
I wanna say it was around six.
Um, five.
Five. How many retired?
Two.
I can see putting three in there. I could see but six.
Well, I can tell you that we put four in in the last class and two lasted two days.
Well, yeah, but they made it through the academy.
They did not.
They did not.
No. So those two people, those two people who did make it through took the two positions of the people who just left.
Right.
Now.
Right.
So what we're trying to do is, I'm trying to, I'm trying to juggle or for, see how we do, this is coming to, coming together. Right now I have four people that I, I'm gonna say that are gonna be leaving in the next six months. So we should, at least, plus I have people...
No, 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 I'm not saying anything.
Oh, I thought you were putting your hand up when you talked.
No, I wouldn't.
Okay, no, it's, I took the hand signal, that's all.
No, I'm not...
What I'm trying to say to you is, I did, I did some figures on this thing and I'm trying to, I'm in a very difficult position. I am at the mercy of the state running this police academy, and I cannot get anyone in there, and I have to do 26 weeks of intensive training, 12 more weeks of field training, and that's the bare minimum to get anybody ready for the road. It's going to cost you approximately, I did some, just, for four people, for, for four people, for, would cost you... Let me just find this here. Overtime rate for, at $40.89 for 40 hours is $1,635.60. Multiply that by a week is $26,169.60 per month for four officers overtime, which equals 157,017.60 for the, for the police academy, if, during the time of the police academy. Then you would add another four months at 20, at $26,169.60 for approximately $78,000, $78,508 for expenditure of nine months, total expenditure for $235,524, $25.60. If we had those vacancies, which is more than, more than double the 132, roughly double the 132,000. So what I'm trying to do is look at this thing, predict if any people are going to try to fail, plus I have the unknown situation that I don't know how many people who we've lost to other agencies in the past few months. Additionally, I have two officers that completed the academy, completed field training, I extended their probation and still dismissed them because they didn't measure up, they didn't qualify. Qualify meaning policies, procedures, et cetera, et cetera. I am not trying to add to my people, what I am trying to do is look at the long-range cost. Please look at this, the people who were on the council before, look at the cost we've had with just four people being out in this last year. We've almost expended the whole $210,000 budget. Some of the figures I put in here are in preparation for, in anticipation for labor situations that I can't really discuss, there's a couple of those that are pending. We have another one that if it goes through, you're gonna be shocked with the amount of overtime simply because some of the things in the contract language will be removed by law. That's my job, is to try to prepare, prepare the department for staffing. Very difficult, especially when I'm limited to one academy that runs twice a year.
Have we ever put six in the academy?
We have not.
We have not.
No. We've never, we've also had the, this, this...
I haven't ever seen six since I've been here, that's why I'm asking.
No, it's all, the most we put is four.
Okay, so it's 22, six for, per trainee, and you said the fire department, we don't have any figures for?
No, they haven't established their curriculum or their...
And is the, is the 22, six everything that doesn't, does that...
No, that really, that's, that's a salary only...
That's just their salary, so it doesn't include their, because we, they have health insurance, yes?
I don't believe these people are taking health insurance. There may be two of them that are, I'm not, again, I don't feel...
The bottom line is, the law requires us to make the offer of the six.
Correct.
Four opted out and two accepted single, individual plans.
So, but the point is that the 22 isn't really the number, right? Because then there are uniforms and...
Well, absolutely.
And other stuff and...
I can give you a more...
And unemployment insurance and...
I could say comfortably that if we put these people through and they did, we do, we were able to hire them, there'd be very short time on maybe unemployment because departments like us, looking for people, would try to scoop them up.
Well, that was my next question, if at the end of this, this, we don't have, which would be unbelievable, but suppose, let's say we have, we, we can hire two, then we have to pay unemployment for the other four until they get a job?
Yes, for whatever portion of, state, the state says. I feel, I feel, I really feel that we're gonna have four openings in a relatively short time.
Madam?
Plus the other conversations, I'm sorry, Mr...
No, sorry, Madam, I was just gonna note, I believe in our last budget discussion, there's a line item in here to budget for the unemployment insurance coverage for those people.
Yep.
We also, in the last contract, reduced our staffing by one. Every time one of our people leave or two people leave, the place, the wheel comes off the car. We're running short staff, we're moving, we're closing the detective division. We are being completely, this is your police department, that's what you pay me to tell you. We are being reactive. When something happens, we go into it. We're not doing any drug investigations, self-initiated. If there's a house break, we take care of it and then we do it minimal. My detectives are all tied up in court, with the municipal courts, not municipal, district courts, parole court, traffic court, that's where they're at. We're not doing anything proactively. The staffing, we have three cars on the road with one arrest, a drunk driver, a domestic situation, I have two people that are in the station for two hours. We have one car for 33 square miles, one. I can give you my stats, we're up 14, 14.1% since 2010 from a number of calls for service. The people who are in your office, it's the same thing, it applies to you as well as your officer's safety, and given today's attitude toward police, I'm not comfortable with having one officer out there. We have mutual aid packs with everyone around us, but they're not gonna, it's not, and I said with Bob, it's not like you have a glow in the sky and we know where to go, this is some guy who's sulking around somewhere and we have to try to get to that location, and Bob knows I'm kidding with him, but they have a much better mutual aid pack than, than we, the police do, simply because that's what they do, they loaned equipment and such out. We just have manpower. So that's pretty much the reason why I did what I did, was well-thought-out process, trying to get the best, best preparation for the town, for the department, in anticipation of some people leaving.
Now, I can see why, I, but I think six was a little, it's just my, I think four would have been better, but whatever.
Chief, I, I had a question. I had asked at the last meeting, but you weren't there. You put six people in the academy, you hire two, four hang around. Three years go by, do they have to be retrained again to be picked up, or once you go through the academy, you're trained for life?
No, you have three years of certification.
Okay.
After three years not at active duty, then you're...
You'd have to send them through again.
Um, I or someone else, I mean, they are...
That's what I'm saying, if you...
I say with confidence that no one's gonna be, if they're a good officer, they're certified by the state, which you have to have state certification. I, I say with confidence that no one's gonna be, uh, if they're a good officer, if they're certified by the state, which you have to have state certification. Again.
Chief, can you, in, in your budget, the, there's no specific line item for this, so I'm assuming that, that the probationary salaries line item
Mm-hmm.
is where this is, but then it's in other line items too, yes? Holding, you know.
This, uh, what we were doing is, this is for this, this fiscal year here, I'm trying to find the monies for this, for this year that's going on right now. These salaries that we're talking about, this is, they're in the, they're in the academy right now. And they'll be out of the academy before the end of the fiscal year.
Do we need to put this money in this budget?
Mm-hmm. And we go.
Not before we save trash, we gotta save trash first before we find our money.
Want to save trash before the police department?
So is this?
Well, I mean, I think we should have thought about it more.
So are these salaries, is this in this year's budget?
I am looking, I am getting monies everywhere I can.
You wouldn't budget it because you didn't know about it until now.
So.
You didn't, you, we didn't make this decision until after, long after the budget was passed.
Okay.
So, it's not in the budget because it wasn't even.
We have an unfunded liability for these six officers who are currently at the academy today.
Mm-hmm.
Of over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars?
Yes.
Not including their potential, well, the, they'll, the unemployment wouldn't be in this contract, right?
Correct, it would be after the.
Twenty-two weeks, but equipment and, and uniforms and insurance and everything else.
Also, if, if these, would I anticipate these people leaving, that their salaries will be available too, to supplement some of this.
Did you know that this was going on, that there was six in the academy? Because we never got wind of this, or shouldn't this have been a discussion in light of this budget being so tight for this year?
I, I, I think you can say that, but I, here's, here's, you know, I knew, we discussed what his plans were because we have a real crisis, because we're discussing the individual people. The, the bottom line is this, there is no good answer to this problem. It is a lose-lose proposition. If we don't, I know what happens when we don't staff. We end up with overtime budgets pushing four-hundred thousand dollars. I'm frightened by the eighteen-month duration because you, you're stuck behind the eight ball. So if the wheels start, if it really does start to fall apart, it falls apart very quickly. Lateral's are much more difficult to do with the police department than they are with the fire department.
Because we are the lowest paid.
So, the overtime comes in the form of fully loaded time and a half plus education incentive, plus longevity. Everything that is included in the overtime compensation formula passes through when we pay a first-class patrolman or a member of the brass time and a half.
Correct.
When we have probies, they are the very lowest pay scale. They're not getting any overtime because the academy is their full commitment. They have no, no longevity. They typically do take no health insurance or less health insurance. So this becomes a, if I'm damned if I do and damned if I don't, how damned do I want to be? And that really is ultimately the crapshoot that we made with this decision.
Chief.
No, I'm a little bit more sanguine than the, the chief is. I'm a little bit more certain just because there are things, a couple of things with a couple of these people that we need to do proactively, and so the administration's driving the bus. There's gonna come a point where we're gonna say, Fisher Cup, eight palin, there isn't anything we can do about this relationship. So I'm quite certain we'll have vacancies, substantial vacancies by the end of the fiscal year.
If, I find, if, so long as the chief is comfortable with his decision, he's the department head. He knows what he's doing. And over the years, he's never, the guy brings money into the department. He knows exactly what's going on. If we're gonna, if, we, what do we need a chief for if we're gonna question every move he makes? He knows what's going on in his department, he knows what's going on in the state. The fire department chief knows what's going on in his department. That's not where the problems are in this town. Let the chief run the police department, that's what we hired him for. The money looks, oh, it's a lot of money right now. Let a couple of guys go down. Let there be a car accident. God forbid one of them gets shot, two of them get hurt, one guy responded to somebody else. You gotta have something in place. We're not gonna let the chief run the department, why hire a chief? Why don't we just make all the decisions?
And, and we're not disputing that. We just need to know that we have this budget in, there's money in the budget to cover this expense. That's part of our job, and all, because we need to approve that. And certainly, we have the utmost confidence in the chief that he, he knows his men and he knows the potential of the situation in the coming six months a year. So I'm comfortable with that, but I, we just need to be aware of the, the costs associated with that and that we're comfortable that there's money in the budget for it. It's our responsibility to be fiscally responsible. So that's what we're trying to do. So we need to understand.
Justify.
Right.
We need to understand the cost per trainee for both the police department and the fire department in detail, just, so it sounds like twenty-two, six is not the number.
Not even close.
We need to know the, the number for the cost of per trainee, everything loaded in, even if it's worst-case scenario with the, with the health insurance. And that's what the request was. We, we wanna know what that cost is. So if we can get that information.
Okay, it was, I wasn't aware of a particular request to that point. I mean, I, I was aware that there were some figures to be, okay.
It was at the last meeting where we discussed the budget on the fourth, we, to provide, the police and fire to provide documentation on the cost per trainee for the training academies, fully loaded. What is it that we're paying to?
First student.
For all line items, what do we, what do we, what is it costing us per trainee? We, we just need to know that.
Absolutely.
So if that can be provided, that's, I think that's still an action item. There's no change to the budget in the fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, but we need to know that information. Because going forward, we, we need to, um, be aware of what it costs when we make the decisions to say, okay, yeah, send a trainee out to the police or, or to the fire academy. We need to know that. So if we don't have that, at the, so in the past, we've just said, yep, you've said you've needed a person to go there, yep, send them, send the guy there.
I think the only difference we have at this time, Madam President, is the fact that we are trying to anticipate. And we know we have certain irons in the fire right now that we've never had previously. Mr. Wojcik and I have discussed a couple, a couple individuals, which obviously we're not gonna discuss here right now, that we know they're going. So, and there's others, again, I can't say a lot about these things.
Again, it's.
And some of the other labor issues.
It's risk management as far as personnel goes, and I can understand that.
It is, it is.
I just have a question why we're not spending salaries next year while they're there. Oh, oh, 'cause it's only, you know what I'm saying?
They're out by the end of June.
They'll be out by the end of June.
They'll be out by July first.
So they don't cost us anything on the next budget?
Just, I believe it's the unfunded liability for unemployment.
For right now, is what you're concerned with right now.
Denise, everyone that's replaced is replaced at a very low level. These guys are at the top of the pay scale. So you, you can get two for one.
I mean, you, you've, you've all experienced something that I've never had in thirteen years. My budget's always been well within limits.
Correct.
But this, this current year, we've had some extraordinary situation where people are, where people are leaving. We've had a lot of injuries, a lot of injured on duty, a lot of FMLA. And when you see that little bit of a crack in the arm, so to speak, and everything fall apart, I mean, I can't believe how far I am into the overtime. That's never, that's unprecedented for me. And this is, but I can see this thing happening compoundedly, and these, all these people leaving. So I'm trying to take the best-case scenario to protect the town, and I'm still looking to try to get, I'll be honest with you. We, we're not doing it the right way with two, three cars on the road. Boy, for the citizenry as well as for the officer's safety.
And I understand that, that, Chief. This is all, you're trying to mitigate the risks to the town, and I understand that. We just need to understand the costs.
Well, I, I, I'm totally aware of it, and I will do my very best. I'll get back to you with all the facts you need.
Madam President, um, just one question pertaining to, uh, the department head requests and on salaries. If we're anticipating some people leaving, should we anticipate that in some of the salary line items for the budget? Or are we just gonna stick the probationaries on there and maybe we hope that those guys retire?
Again, it's chicken and, chicken and the egg, which comes first? Do we take them out of the salary, salary items, or we have to leave them in at the higher rate until we know for sure?
Okay.
So.
In my mark of the budget, which is the farthest column to the right.
Yep.
You'll see a decrease in the first-class patrolman line and an increase in the probationary line.
Okay.
For, three, three FTE is what I felt like I could budget with some certainty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Item thirteen, haba master, town administrator was gonna review account sixty-six ninety and sixty-nine thirty.
I did, and you can tell that I'm not a boater because I didn't understand Tyler's cost structure. But his winterization invoice hasn't come in yet. And then we'll pay for the storage of the boat in the late winter, early spring when he takes the boat out, and that's gonna be the vast majority of that account will be accounted for with invoices that arrive late in the fiscal year. And then he needs another two thousand left there for gas, for, for patrol, once he's back on the water.
Okay. Okay, so no action on those. On-site wastewater management, you were gonna retrieve some documentation from the Tiven Wastewater District.
So, either tomorrow or early Wednesday, Leroy has promised me a full report on what he believes is four separate activity streams that account for his outs program, and he'll justify every dollar that he's gotten. Now, whether or not that means we continue or not is a different discussion, but I'm looking forward to his report.
Okay. Uh, we were gonna leave, I think we're gonna leave it in at thirty-nine K for now until we get that information. Is that okay? Rubbish recycling, discussions on options, RFP. We have the RFP on the consent agenda, and we'll either have further discussion on the twenty-third, but most likely on the thirtieth since we're having a public hearing on trash on the, on the thirtieth.
So, this week, I will be meeting with my colleague in Portsmouth to go over in more detail what we discussed today. There's real interest in considering the economies of scale that the two towns might achieve if we work together. It is based upon our landfill operators' observation that the last two days of the week were very light, and we might be able to work with another town to fill up a trucking company's full capacity for two weeks or, you know, ten runs at a time with us as the minority partner there. There is a move afoot, uh, it's the current vendors, the same vendor we have for trash has decided to no longer operate the transfer station in Portsmouth. So there's an asset there as well that we should consider using. The other thing is, we still have a landfill. We still use, could use yard waste for, to mix into cover. If Portsmouth's yard waste added to ours, it's a substantially larger volume. It might, uh, help us sever some of the other relationships we don't necessarily want to have around cover.
So there, it looks like we have more and more.
There's a there there, and Rich wants to talk about it. I'm anxious to talk to him about it.
Okay, great. Item sixteen, um, the OPEC funding, new line item that was added. Seventeen, the zoning update, that also was, uh, new account was added. Um, and then eighteen, um, this was provide status on the code rewrite advertisement responses. On October twenty-fourth, we passed a motion to advertise for a code rewrite, uh, RFP, and I don't believe that it was advertised. So, I think we just wanted to bring that up and say, I think we need to go out for advertisement.
Is that what you're telling me to do, put it out for advertisement?
That was our direction on October twenty-fourth. Knowing that we probably do not have any money in this budget for it, the line item has been added. And potentially, it could be a, um, not a rewrite, but an update for just the ordinances that have been passed in the last few years that have not been incorporated into the code.
That's what I had approached the council for before. And now I'm hearing that it may be even less money to do that, but what we need is a cleanup and codifying of some zoning things that, I can't send them down there without having them cleaned up, and we need to do that. So I, now I'm going out for map clubs. I'm suggesting that we use, that is a historic record, and we could use some historic record. Minimal amount, and, uh, you could hire, it's beyond the scope of what your solicitors do now, but, I mean, it's beyond what their contractual obligations are. But I think we need to try to work out a arrangement with one of our solicitors to see if he'll clean it up and.
So I think what.
See what the cost is, could we do that?
So what I believe I'm hearing is, uh, we probably need an estimate from our current town solicitor on what it would be to just bring us whole, uh, and we need that in the budget.
Just, uh, not more than, I don't even know that I, well, anyway, yes, that's about what you want.
Yeah. So, so Tony, to you.
He really got any answer, but okay.
I'll discuss with Nancy this week.
Okay, but we need to get it into the budget.
Not if we only clean up and we utilize funds from the historic records. But if you want this whole rewrite advertised, we're gonna be spending money for that advertisement unless you're sincere about trying to find the money to do it. Otherwise, I'm gonna waste a couple of thousand dollars advertising it.
Let's bring this up on the next agenda for further direction to the town clerk on whether to advertise or not. Sounds reasonable to me. And on the flip side, we'll have Tony give us a, an estimate for just to bring us whole with what we've, we have out there today. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
Thanks. We don't want to forget it.
Madam President, um, I just have one other item with regards to the budget. And I can't believe I hadn't looked at this until just now. Out of curiosity, I wanted to know what the budget would look like today if we subtracted out the debt obligation that the voters approved on the ballot. And just so everybody is clear on this, it would represent a decrease of about one and a half million dollars. So, to anybody who's watching this, or anybody who's still here, this is a significant task to be able to not increase our municipal budget by more than one percent, given the fact that the voters approved an initiative that adds almost one-point-two-million dollars to said municipal budget.
So what do you suggest that we do?
So my suggestion, and given the way that I know a lot of the residents feel, the way that, the ones that I've spoken to, is I suggest that we put the full amount back on the budget for the trash contract and let that ride. I, I, as a policy decision, I'm not gonna be the one who sits here and says that we should take away trash from, from the people who elected us to sit here. You know, I think it should be the policy of this council that we're gonna provide these services to our residents. And yes, we're gonna do so cost-effectively, but we shouldn't strip services away because of an initiative that the voters clearly wanted and they, they felt like they should pay for.
I agree with that, but I think we should add other things on here too.
I completely agree with that.
I don't see how we can have fields and not, not take care of them. There's a lot of, I think we should add recreation. I have a really hard time not giving our boards and commissions money to do their job. I, I really do.
I'm with you, that stuff needs to be put back in.
I have a really hard time not giving to the visiting nurses who, who help the citizens of this town. And that's not a lot of money. I was adding that up.
That's why I was saying.
And that really isn't that much money.
It's forty-something thousand dollars.
But I mean, I agree, we have a very low, we, we've brought it down low and we've looked at every item. But not only trash, I mean, I cannot see getting rid of recreation at all. I can't see not funding the boards and commissions. I mean, it's not gonna bring it up as high as people think it's gonna. 'Cause I was looking at it the other night. By adding things in and doing a lot, it probably added up to the same savings. I think it was a one-point. I think it was a one point two-five increase. Restoring a lot of what I wanted to restore. I think it's, I mean, you can save money, but I don't think it's right to destroy some things.
I'm with you, we need to put the recreation back in.
I think anything between one and two percent is very reasonable in light of the school bond, in light of the cuts we took last year. I think if we can pull it off, we've done a really excellent job. And if the voters don't want to vote for it, well, that's their option. But I think in light of all the cuts we have had, to have this budget be somewhere between one and one point five percent is really a good job.
You really want to pull it off, let's try new businesses in town. Let's ease up that.
We're talking about the budget right now, so.
We need to discuss businesses, and we won't be talking about the budget so much. We need revenue, not cuts, revenue.
Madam President, I mean, I would even go so far as to say that if we put back the programs and services that were taken out of this budget in an exercise to prove that we could get under one percent in an increase, we would still essentially be flat-lined or lower relative to where the budget was last year. Which in and of itself, I think, is a big win considering some of the issues that have come up through the FTR over the past few years. So I would like to, personally, I would like to see a budget with the services and departments restored that we all feel are necessary to running a vibrant community and taking care of our residents. Because in reality, we look at trash, trash is going, it's not going to impact me, I can bring my trash to the landfill. It's going to impact my neighbors who cannot make it to the landfill, who don't have either a truck or are too old to be able to get down there. They're the ones that need these services, and we have to look out for those because that's who we were elected by, and that's who we were elected to serve.
Just a few things I just mentioned. I'm just making sure my mouth was right before, that's sixty-five thousand dollars. That's the summer recreation, that's the maintenance of our fields, that's bringing back in the boards and commissions, stipends, and that's also bringing back all the visiting nurses and all that. And then I had said, how much would it be to restore trash? It was like two hundred more?
Yeah, so in the department head's request line, I felt that if the town had five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the budget, we would have the resources, we'd need to go into a negotiation or competitive bidding process to find a contract that we could afford. It may not be exactly the same as today, but we could try to make it work.
But what did you cut in, I'm sorry?
Well, I cut it to two forty-five.
So we needed like-
You need two eighty.
About eight hundred thousand dollars is a percent.
What's that?
An eight hundred thousand dollar increase represents about one percent of the budget, right?
The municipal budget is nineteen and change, so ten percent is a hundred ninety thousand. So one percent is nineteen thousand. No. How am I doing, it's getting late, it's getting late. One point nine million is ten percent. A hundred ninety thousand is one percent. See, I caught up, I'm all right. Hundred ninety thousand's about one percent on the municipal budget.
On the municipal budget.
But again, in, in, in reality, we, we added one point two million in debt service to the top line of this budget. And I think it's imperative that everybody understand that. That the town of Tiverton, our voters voted pretty, almost unanimously to add another one point two million dollars to the bottom line of our municipal budget. So we, we cannot make a government run by cutting out all of our departments, or else we're going to have all of our service, I mean, you can't shut down the fire department. You can't shut down the police department.
Joan, I really liked your suggestion last time to maybe have a meeting Thursday, is that what you're thinking? And then you could come back and talk about it.
Madam President, that's Randy's day off.
Wednesday, after the Budget Committee joint meeting, is that what you suggested?
Right.
I liked that idea.
Yep.
And then Matt, who one of the figures here.
So I, I think what I'm hearing is that as a matter of town council policy, we'd like to restore trash pickup, restore recreation to what it was. I personally would like to restore the senior citizen bus, to, so restore that as well. And I believe restore boards and commissions. And-
And what's the, the community?
I think for the civic appropriations, certainly the visiting nurses and East Bay community are the top two. I know that Eastern Rhode Island Conservation is helping us out with some forest, farm and forest activities. And certainly, parents as teachers, you know, they help, they help out, so.
It's five hundred dollars. It's five hundred dollars.
Right. So.
I'll donate the five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
So if we can, if we can restore those.
Excuse me, Madam President, it's too late to advertise for adding time to Wednesday night. You need forty-eight hours. And it's past seven.
May I ask one question here on this? In the budget that Matt gave us the last time, and maybe I have the long copy of this, but I just want to make sure. The total municipal budget at that point was nineteen eight-eight-one? That was the one. And the new one that we have right now is nineteen seven fifty-one?
Right.
So, and I, I don't have a calculator here in front of me. So you're telling me that by cutting,
I wasn't cutting overtime or anything.
By, by lowering the municipal budget by, what is this? A hundred and thirty, is that what this is, the map is? That, that that would lower the increase from one point, one point oh-four down to point three-six?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because one percent is a hundred ninety-eight thousand. So if you're at a hundred and thirty.
So here's the only other thing I'm going to say about this, and because I know that Joan would like to wrap this up. But, you know, I spent some time going through this budget over the weekend. And, you know, I found more places where, in addition to some of the things that you've cut, Matt, I found more places where I think that there are, you know, there's room to cut some more. But also, to be honest, I found some places where I'm a little worried, particularly on things like heat and electric, when looking at past bills, that we're underfunding here. And, you know, I think it's a start, but I think this needs more work. You know? And, and I, and I, you know, I have a couple of, I have a few questions about some of the, some of the fixed costs.
And I, and I also have some concerns with the planning board because we need to,
Yes.
We have the comp plan, and we really need to have more feedback on that.
I'll give you some.
We probably will have to have more of that.
I'm going to start limiting you to a certain number of outbursts per meeting.
Madam President, I got a lot of edits to make, let me just run through. It's getting late, but I think it's, it is important that we recap, so the next thing I present you is what you think you've decided. What I'm accommodating here is a cut in the council contingency by twenty-five thousand, cut fire department overtime by fifty. The streetlights capital portion, there was a fifty-eight, we brought it down to fifty-five, so that's three thousand more. Operating account for streetlights to forty-four thousand, that's a reduction of eleven. I had thrown in those clerks and building official part-time inspector, they don't need to be there, that's about about fifty-two thousand. And no consulting engineer, five thousand. So I came up with one forty-five nine-nine-six was the savings on the table, additional savings. Then you add back eighteen six-twenty for a part-time fire department clerk. There was a screwy coding error on that same line, so it's a seven hundred and eighty-seven dollar math mistake on my part, so play with that. Then if we bring trash from two forty-five to five twenty-five, that's an increase of two eighty. Bring recreation back, that's forty. Bring back the senior bus, that's sixteen. Boards and commissions is another sixteen, and the civic appropriations is twenty. So you have about a hundred and forty-six, a hundred and twenty-seven, a hundred and twenty-eight, three seventy-two, one twenty-eight, four, four. About two hundred and forty-four thousand dollar increase net of all the things we've discussed tonight. And that is about one point three percent.
No, Matt.
Change, the delta's one point three percent. But remember, if you bring down that one forty-five nine-nine-six, I talked about, you're below, you're actually cutting the budget, including, remember, interest only on the school bond.
Now, the five twenty-five for the trash, that potential could go down, could go down quite a bit.
I doubt it.
You don't think so?
Nah, I'm, my cuts are telling me that that's what we need to get any kind of contract.
Yep.
Now, you're at six fifty now. Yard waste, yeah, yard waste only, taking that out of the service profile only saved us about forty grand.
Well, I was thinking you were at five and a quarter, I didn't know we were at six.
Trash and recycling both.
Trash and recycling both, so if we can squeeze more efficiencies.
Back from recycling.
At the moment, the market is too low and we are not getting a refund this year. That can change, but watch China, that's what matters.
Come on, Trump.
Two forty-four. Which is, it's going to be about one and a half percent. You will still, you'll be a half a percent over your target that you originally assigned to me.
But basically, we're even because we added.
You're still lower.
Right, we're lower, but, I mean, if we didn't put a couple of roofs and a couple of boilers, we'd be coming in low.
You would, you would be almost, you know, you'd be one point, one point zero five percent lower than you were last year. So, I mean, I think personally that if you take out that bond payment, I mean, my opinion is we voted for it, we should pay for it. So, but we shouldn't pay for it on the backs and at the expense of every single service and program that is critical to running a municipal government and a community. And I think we've more than done what we were tasked to do by bringing in a number that is minus that payment, lower than what the previous year's budget was.
I agree.
I would, I would agree with John, although I do think that, you know, one of the points of this exercise is that it's easy for a budget to get away from you after a while. You know, it's easy sometimes for things to sort of creep up because that's the number and that's the number. And you don't sort of realize at the end of the year, there's a surplus, or year after year, there's a surplus in this account, or whatever it is. So I still think it's a worthwhile exercise to look hard at some of these accounts and decide if some of them are frankly just overfunded because they've just sort of been, you know, it's like a rock rolling down the hill. And it's a good time to clean them up and have a reset on some of them.
I don't disagree, I think that's part of responsible government.
Yep, and revenue would be a great thing.
Revenue would be awesome.
Yep.
I second that.
And I know a way to do it.
Okay, so if we have Matt revise the numbers, would everyone be available for a short meeting on Thursday to just review it and give preliminary approval? The only other option is on Saturday?
I'll give up Thursday.
Just, just so we're aware, the Patriots do play on Saturday, so.
Yeah, yeah, Patriots. Who about me?
It would have to be in the morning.
I'll, I'll make a promise, not a threat, if we meet on Saturday, it's going to be me and three kids, two of them under seven months old.
Okay, so, so Thursday, seven o'clock, and-
And we have to be at either the senior center or the library.
Yeah, Budget Committee's here.
The Budget Committee is meeting here.
Let's go to the library, we'll get some use out of it.
The library, that's fine, if not, we can do the senior center. Okay.
What, what Thursday we speaking on?
This Thursday.
So we Wednesday and Thursday?
Yes.
I didn't know this was going to be a full-time job.
That's what it is. All right, so we have an action item on that, and the town clerk will schedule and let us know. Bids and requests for proposals, none. Town administrator announcements? Town council announcements, I just have a couple of items. Like to schedule photos for the town website?
Thursday.
Thursday? Thursday.
At the library, Thursday.
Thursday, that's a, that's a possibility. Well, I was going to ask if you wanted to do it before the, the January twenty-third meeting?
We could do it then, too, while we're here.
If we came in like six-thirty, we could queue up for photos. David Robert has been kind enough to offer his services for the photos, and if we could get a group photo, that would be great. And we would be all in purple for Purple Week, just a reminder.
We'll get your t-shirts.
T-shirts.
You bring me a t-shirt, I'll wear it, I will wear that. Size large.
Can you put all the flamingos at her house, please?
No. I'm going to buy insurance. Okay, my next announcement is Eastern Rhode Island Conservative District is having a session at the Tiverton Library on Wednesday, January eleventh, from five-thirty to six-thirty. On, it's a winter workshop for farm and forest landowners to help them with their conservation stewardship program and just give them lots of information. So that's coming up, and I also want to make everyone aware on the council that we do need to complete NIMs training. And that can be done online. There's no, there's no option for it to be done in person?
No, and you don't want to sit through a class, that, that's done online. Trust me, that's the best. Sorry, Chief.
I've been through it, so.
Yeah.
Does everybody have the website and information to do the NIMs training?
You remember the memo I sent you when you first came on the council?
Madam President, what is that?
National Incident Management System.
Why don't you just say that?
I didn't know what it meant. I'll be honest, I didn't know what it meant either.
I asked Joe, and he said, he told me, but I couldn't hear out of that ear.
Oops. And also, I forgot, have you all done your bios also for the website?
No.
I, I will complete that.
Please get your bios in so that they can be uploaded to the website. And also for Chromebooks, if you haven't got your Chromebook, or if you need training on your Chromebook, please schedule time with David Robert. And just one last item from me is to sort of suggest that you document your council goals for the next two years so that maybe we can get all on the same page and work towards the same goals.
I know what Randy's on.
Yes, we know. We don't need to hear it today, just document your goals.
I think I know it's top ten.
Any other council announcements from?
Yes, I have one, just to let people know that Nancy put in the newspaper, I think it's, it's this past Akonat Times, there's an opening, three openings for the Casino Subcommittee. So is that the only place that it was in, in the Akonat Times?
Yes.
And that's all it's going to be in, right, or do you have notices up here?
Put some notices up.
Or on the website or something, just in case they don't have, they didn't get the newspaper. But it's, so it's, we're just trying to get a broad representative from the town. So if you could just, it, it just, it just tells you what to do and you're going to just submit it to Nancy. And the forms are online as well.
Can you put it on Patch, too, if it's possible, put it on the Patch?
I don't know if anybody uses, uses Patch anymore. Any other council announcements, Mr. LeBeau? No? Okay.
Excuse me, I just have one question on the Casino Subcommittee. Is, what is the status, do we have a status of members of the Budget Committee being appointed as well as the School Committee?
No, actually, I was going to ask Joan about that.
I have not heard.
Well, I know that there's a potential conflict in the charter, and I don't know, and I don't- and I don't know if this, if this has been addressed, or, so it hasn't been.
What, what's the conflict? Is that, oh.
Yeah. There, there's restrictions, at least in the Budget Committee section, that members of the Budget Committee cannot serve on any other board or commission or committee.
Subcommittee?
Yeah, that language.
Is that, Tony, is that right?
I'll double-check that, but this is not a permanent town committee, it's more of a study commission type, so I'll take a look at it.
And I don't know about how it applies to the School Committee as well.
I would assume it would be similar, right? Pardon?
Budget Committee powers and duties?
I'll, 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 I'll look into it.
Thank you, Mr. Karen, for bringing that to our attention. Town solicitor, no other announcements? Are you sure, Randy?
I'm good for now.
Okay. Oh, well.
Thank you.
Then I have one more, just request, we have openings on the zoning board of review for alternate 1 and 2. We really need people to step up and apply for appointment to that committee, dire need. Town solicitor announcements, none. Town clerk, items and announcements?
The Charter Commission election and the FTI, we're still working on it. But the Planning Board has asked for a joint workshop with the council to review the status of comprehensive community plan. So, I thought you might wanna plan a time, and I noticed Mr. Hadi is still here, so. So, the council, do you plan on doing it in January? I think, Stu, you were kind of wanting to get this going, weren't you?
I don't think that there's any great urgency on, on it. We're, we're moving forward sort of behind the scenes with statewide planning and trying to define the scope of the work that needs to be done, and actually, we've made some good progress with statewide planning in that respect. So, there's no, there's no urgency, but certainly, certainly February, I think, would be appropriate.
Would you like to come to our Thursday meeting and discuss your budget as well as this? We could bundle them together.
I believe we get a discount for that.
We, we would need to, we would need to notify the members of the Planning Board. They'll, they'll need more time, right? We, we have also been having two meetings a month in recent months.
All right, so if we can schedule something in February, I don't know if we have the schedule yet for February. And there is a holiday in February, right?
Yeah, that's on the 20th.
Yes.
Can't you do it Tuesday on the 14th? Oh, that's Valentine's Day.
I will be unable to attend that day.
Yeah, that's not doable. Unless you wanna have a spouse revolt.
I'm good on Wednesdays.
Are you good on Wednesdays?
Do it on Thursday.
Wednesday, Wednesday the 8th, the town hall's free. That's the only day I see in February it's free.
Is that okay with, well, you'll, I think Stu would have to check with the Planning Board members.
And we've got a meeting coming up next week.
I'll do an email call.
Okay. Okay, great.
Have you done this in the past on Saturdays? But it doesn't matter.
No. No.
Not good, well, that's.
I go to the dump on Saturdays, that's my thing.
So, Wednesday, February 8th, looks pretty good, okay, I'll, I'll, we'll see. I'm forming with someone else.
Okay. So, tentatively, February 8th, meeting with the joint workshop with the Planning Board.
Stu, the only thing with that is you do have a Planning Board meeting on the 7th.
That's fine.
All right. Just didn't know if that mattered.
And February's a short month, only has 28 days. Okay, close to executive session. Ms. Medeas.
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed executive session under Solicitor 4246582, litigation case number 01-15003-1203, Patrick White.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes.
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 Ms. LeBeau?
Yes.
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 I'd like to make a motion to go into closed executive session, Solicitor pending litigation 42-46582, Tiven V. Murray and Chadwick.
Second.
NC 2016-0326.
I have motion and second?
Yes.
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 John?
Yes.
And again, I'd like to go into executive session under Counsel Shabat 4246581, performance evaluation, town administrator notice given.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Last chance, you don't wanna continue this stuff till next, till Thursday, do you, you could.